Okay Beth, you can start your scripts whenever you're ready.
Okay, um, the Board of Direct entry midwifery meeting is convening at 8:06 a.m. on April 15th, 2021 at the Health and Licensing Office in Salem, Oregon by telephone conference call. I will now call Rose. Meredith Klein.
Here.
Uh, Beth Ivah, here. Wendy Smith.
Here.
Christine Morales.
Here.
Kelsey. Here. Lynette Pettibone.
Here.
And Meredith Mann.
Here.
Members, when you wish to speak, please state your last name for the record. For the record, public members calling into the Publix online are asked to email April Fleming at April.Plemming@THSOHA.state.org.us and provide your first and last name. Public and interested parties' feedback may be hers during the public interested party's feedback period if indicated on the agenda. Everyone is asked to use appropriate language, manners, and protocols when conducting board business. This meeting is called to order.
Good job Beth. Um, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
This is Kelsey Fisher and I move to approve the agenda.
This is Wendy Smith and I second.
Okay. I don't have that script. Do I just call everybody's name and then see?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay.
So just don't give a question and then quit to include yourself.
Got it. Meredith Klein.
Uh, aye.
Beth Ivah, aye. Wendy Smith.
Aye.
Uh, Christine Morales.
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher.
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone.
Aye.
And Meredith Mann.
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the public interested party's feedback.
Correct.
And I think we've Silka on the phone.
Yes, I think you should have a separate panel or four of them.
So at this time, the Board of Direct entry midwifery will hear public interested party's feedback. Members of the Publix, please wait until you have been recognized. Once recognized, please state your name and affiliation to the Board for the record.
So hold on real quick Bob before you get up on that Wendy's got her hand up. Wendy, did you need to say something?
I do have a question. So I, are we allowed to ask the question to this or not?
To what? Question to the public comment?
Yeah.
Um, you, you can, yeah?
Okay. Thanks.
Uh huh. Okay Bob, if you want to make sure that Silka can hear everybody and that she can speak.
Silka, can you hear everybody?
Yes.
Everybody, can you hear Silka?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're on Silka.
Great, thank you. Good morning, members of the Board and HLO staff. Um, my name is Silka Akerson. I'm the Executive Director of the Oregon Midwifery Council and I am grateful for the opportunity to speak about the Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices Committee that will be forming. I'm really glad that the Board is working on this. Um, because with the changes in Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices rules, there's been a little bit of a gap in people's midwives' access to necessary Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices education. And there's also some confusion about the new requirements. I think this is really timely to work on this. And mainly, I wanted to make sure that the need for online Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices continuing education is addressed in this committee. I think especially with the smaller number of hours and the way that continuing education is changing, it would be really wonderful if the Board can, I'm sure that there is useful guidance and permission for this continuing education to be online. And then I wanted to recommend some people for the committee who have been the main people who teach Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices continuing education in Oregon or have specific information about ways to make this curriculum the most functional and effective for safe practice of midwifery. And the people I recommend are Julia Bailey, Holly Scholz, Jessica Dolan, although she's not an LDM, she is the owner of the main continuing education platform that's in use by Oregon Midwives and there's a high likelihood that an LDND curriculum would be on that platform. Uh, Kelsey Fisher, Catherine Bailey, and also Jessica V. Rudiger, I think would be excellent people for the committee. I also wanted to comment that I don't think it's necessary to have providers besides LDMs on this committee. I, um, to be perfectly frank, chase at the kind of paternalistic idea that midwives need to be led by other provider types and I just ask Board members to think, um, if they know of any examples where midwives or other provider types are involved in this level of detailed planning for other provider types, like are midwives and nurses on the committees about continuing education positions, et cetera. Um, I think those are all of my comments and I'm really excited to see what the committee comes up with in terms of just practical and sustainable ways of ensuring all LDMs have excellent Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices continuing education.
Bob, is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Uh, this is Wendy Smith. I just had a question Silka. What, what is your concern about having an alternative type, you know, on who may have, you know, experience and use and has, I'm just curious what your concern is?
I mean, I think that if the, if the committee decided that they wanted the expertise of someone who has, you know, particular knowledge around particular medication or device, that would make a lot of sense to me. But I, what I chase against is the idea that just by matter of course, we need to assign someone of another profession to this group. Midwives have been managing our Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices education for a very long time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you Silka. Is there anybody else on the public phone that would like to make a comment? No.
No, okay. So, um, just wanted to clarify, um, Beth is reading the scripts. Um, however, Meredith as the chair is on the phone and still in control of the meeting. However, she's driving and so she had asked that Beth would read the script, so I just want to put that on the record. So Beth, we are on, sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying to Beth.
Hell. Alright, so we are on item number four. So, this is where we have you talk about the LDND and kind of who, what kind of positions you want on the Board. Um, you're welcome to discuss the, um, comments that Silka made and then there, and then Srinivas is on the phone or on the meeting and so is Sammy, so they can take note of what kind of positions that you would like. So, go ahead and have that conversation.
Uh, this is Kelsey Fisher and I was hoping I could just clarify a little bit. I know that Silka mentioned that there's some confusion among midwives about, um, the changes that we've already made to LDND continuing education and I just wanted to speak to it a little bit. First, which is something a little bit semantic, that, um, when we are referring to LDND continuing education, that includes both the LDND, what used to be known as the renewal that we have to do, you know, every couple of years, and it also includes the initial Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices. Technically, that's considered continuing education. Um, and so the, my understanding is part of this committee work is primarily to design a curriculum for that initial Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices, which is still considered continuing education. And as far as the changes that we've made to what used to be known as the renewal, that I don't see, and other Board members will feel free to contradict me, but I don't see any requirement that that couldn't be online. Essentially, those five hours can be obtained in any manner that we've already outlined any other continuing education may be obtained. And so that includes, um, online or in person or through teaching or self-study. Those things are all, um, already accessible, um, for other types of, for the other hours and that includes now the LDND renewal, renewal specific hours. It just has to be those things on the topics of, um, Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices. So, I hope that came clear a little bit up for our members. Um, I think that was all the clarification I had. Thanks.
So I just, Beth, I have an initial just clarifying question. Um, I'm just reading through the memo on the Education Committee and membership and I just want to clarify, because I know Silka recommended that Kelsey be on the committee. Um, and the memo here states that an Education Committee is, um, about outside stakeholders and interested parties and therefore Board members will not serve as members of the Education Committee, so I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that is correct.
Is she to be on it or, or is she not able to be on it because she's a Board member?
So it's, it's, the intent of a Rules Advisory Committee is to have individuals give a recommendation to the Board. Ultimately, the Board gets to make the decision. So they're, it's, it's not appropriate to have Kelsey on, on the committee because she ultimately gets to help to make the decision on what is actually implemented.
Okay.
That makes sense, although you'd probably be great on that committee, Kelsey.
Thanks, yeah, thank you Silka for that recommendation, but I would decline to be on that committee. Um, let's, let's talk about some of the recommendations or does anyone who, who did their homework and have their own ideas for who's on this committee? Or not who, but which?
Can you just define the mission? This is Wendy, oh, sorry, sorry. This is Wendy. Can you just define the mission and goals of this committee so that I'm really clear on what, what the question is we're, we're working on, they're working on?
Sammy, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Maybe, um, so I'm just going to talk to what Kelsey said and then add some clarification for Wendy. This is just based on over years talking to Holly and all these things kind of wrapped up the Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices. So, um, originally we started Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices in the early 2000s. It was to bring all these LDMs up to speed who'd never used them before, which is where the original 35 hours came in. Well, at some point, that was supposed to fall off and never did. So, I think the committee's job at this point is to decide where in the middle between the 40 hours where we are requiring and the five hours in the middle, um, gets everybody where they need to be on a biannual basis. Because it's my understanding that when you are trained, if you take the NARM, you're ready. You're ready to do, to do, you know, all the labor stuff, all of our stuff and which includes Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices. It's part of your initial training and education. And then the continuing education for Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices would just be to keep that education up. And so somewhere in the middle of the initial and the renewal will be the newfound common goal of how do we keep you guys up to speed on Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices on a biannual basis? Does that make sense?
Yeah. That's actually not quite, sorry, this, yeah, thank you for that clarification Sammy. That's not quite where I thought this committee was going to be. My last, uh, my recollection was that in the rulemaking process, we addressed the LDND renewal, um, because we felt it was too prescriptive the way that it was. Um, but we, we knew it was a much bigger job to address the initial LDND continuing education and that maybe the 40 hours is excessive and the curriculum is much too, um, kind of locked in and prescriptive. And we thought that there should be a mechanism for verifying if people have already completed those requirements in their schooling. But just because someone has taken the NARM doesn't mean they know how to use all of the medications and equipment that we have in our scope in Oregon. Um, and so my understanding of this committee was also to be focused on what curriculum we need for that initial training to bring, to bridge the gap between the CPM education and being an Oregon midwife. Um, because there can be some differences depending on where you're trained and what your experiences are. And so that it is also about that initial, um, more perhaps than the renewal.
Which may be somewhere in the middle, some point, I think.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I would like to see would be a mechanism for verifying, like, education people already have. Like, um, I went to Vassar and I got essentially, when I took the initial Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices, it was a big repeat of things that I'd already done because my school did cover all of these, um, drugs and devices and skills, but not all of them do. So, I would love to see a pathway for verifying. Um, and that was something that we, the Board had kind of briefly talked about before was could there be some kind of skills demonstration or checklist that could happen in lieu of the initial training, um, but also the curriculum needs to be gone over. Right.
Which would also be relevant, um, Kelsey, for people that moved from another state where, um,
Yeah, absolutely.
Where they were, you know, doing all those things. I mean, of course state to state is different, but it's, I agree with what you're saying that, I'm just giving another example of a way that somebody might come in and be able to document and prove that they've already fulfilled a lot of those requirements.
Right, I think that Meredith Klein spoke to this, I mean, Meredith Mann, sorry, spoke to this previously, that, you know, coming from another state where she already had all the experiences and skills using the, these same Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices, it feels a little silly to have to sit brand a hierarchy, um, in that class just to get an organ license when she had, you know, a decade of experience.
Agreed. This is Meredith Mann. It's also like a lack of accessibility right now. I mean, we have one teacher who's teaching this like very long prescriptive class and she is not always available, you know, so it was months and months and months before I could even apply for my license when I moved here.
Wendy has her hand up.
Um, I do. I mean, I, I just think it's going to be really important to make sure that we're very prescriptive in what this group is needed for and what their role is then, if it sounds like, you know, they're, they may just need to be very, very well clarified. Um, um, because Kelsey, it sounds to me like you're feeling like there has to be an in-person hands-on portion then that maybe like precedes the need for a longer? I mean, can you do a two-step type of that?
I don't know that I'm saying there has to be a hands-on portion. I think that there needs to be like some, like we could replace initial Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices with some mechanism that that education has been satisfactorily completed, whether it's part of somebody's schooling or there's like additional coursework that they do to bridge that gap.
Can you have a state matching kind of procedure where you look at the years of experience and numbers practiced in a, in a state that has similar, you know, LDND to Oregon and then be able to say, okay, whereas a new provider or a provider coming from a state, you know, that doesn't have the same? I mean, has to do something different or it all has to be the same?
No, I mean, that's what I, that's what I would love to see is some flexibility in this initial Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices. And I think if that's something that we don't have to decide what we want it to look like, we just have to tell the committee, like, we want this amount of flexibility or, you know, um, something along those lines. I think that that's sort of the purpose of creating it is so that they can present us with ideas and we just sort of tell them that, we, we give them the direction, which I suspect is one of the reasons Silka wanted me on, or recommended me for the RAC and so that like, to ensure that they're actually going in the direction that the Board is intending, but I think we can not give them clear direction.
Yeah, I mean, how, Sammy, how do we make sure that that clear direction is, is available? Can we write, can we write, can Kelsey write and we agree, we approve what she writes? Sort of make sure.
Um, no. Yeah, I mean, you could give some parameters for sure. Um, of course, if you make it too, too stringent, we may not be able to have enough flexibility. But I think what I hear is there's kind of three types of people that we're talking about, maybe four. One who doesn't really have any training, they're brand new, came from somewhere else and don't know any Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices, need a full course curriculum, whatever that looks like. Um, somebody who maybe already has a license somewhere else, um, or went to Vassar, doesn't have a license, but has the training they need for Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices and needs some kind of skill demonstration. Um, and we don't know what that would, that could be something. And then the last piece would be for everybody who's already has a license and biannually has some kind of renewal to demonstrate one of the five pieces of Legends, Drugs &amp; Devices. So that's kind of a broad, I think, snapshot of what you guys are talking about, which I'm happy to write. Um, but give me feedback on that.
Well, I, this is Beth. I also am wondering, maybe this wouldn't be possible because I don't know, I'm not, I'm not enough LDM, but, um, some sort of a test, like to, because like what Meredith was saying, like, or, you know, coming from somewhere where you obviously have already done this and you don't need to have a redundant, you know, training schedule of all of it, how, how are we going to assess on a person-by-person basis that they actually know it? And would it be possible to devise some sort of a test to see knowledge?
Well, that's why I think, yeah, I mean, that's why I think a hands-on skills is important. I mean, even in a hospital-based provider, when we go to a new system, we have to be proctored for a certain number of, of procedures, even if you've been practicing somebody at, somewhere else for years and years, you don't just get added on because you have this background, to be honest. Somebody is looking over your shoulder for a little bit. So, I mean, I, I would, I would be inclined to have an in-person assessment, um, option or make, if that's.
Back when, uh, Holly was talking about it, I think that was one of the things that she talked about, is we would look at certain people that may qualify, maybe it's an LDM, CNM, there'd be some parameter of what a proctor may look like and they could proctor something to do with five sutures or, um, you know, 10 IV starts and they would sign off. That, that could do it. I don't know if that would be sufficient, but that's something we can look at.
Yeah.
We do that in other programs, like sleep, sleep studies, they have to do 30 sleep studies with the supervisor and they have to be signed off on. So it's not something we don't do for other programs.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I mean, that could be something that the committee would improve.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is Kelsey and I would really love to see this be more of, at least for the initial, to be more of a, some kind of skills verification, whether that's vetting education or actually having like a proctor's demonstration. I think that it's excessive of us to like require that you have to have X amount of hours in this and Y amount of hours in this, even if you've already had that education before. So if we could move towards, you know, this is the education that we need and, and these are the mechanisms in which you can obtain it and then like the license application is just includes some kind of skill verification, um, I think that that would be a really great way to go because then people, you know, can fill in sort of their, their own gaps. Like if you, if you've trained with a midwife who doesn't use Methergem, like you could take an hour class on Methergem and like, you know, then you understand that medication. Um, and so then, you know, there could be classes that I would assume people would come up with, um, to like just help people fill those gaps, you know, as, as needed, instead of having one chunk that everybody has to take regardless of what they already know.
This is Wendy, I have one more question. What, what do EMS do? What are, because I think that, I'm just trying to think about where this is aligned with. How do EMS show clinical skills? Does anyone have any idea?
Nobody I can find out.
I, I mean, it, I don't know, it, does any LDM have any thought on this being kind of equivalent to that? Skill demonstration or?
I mean, Wendy, I think part of it is that like we have so many skills that we have to demonstrate, like just to get our credential, the CPM credential. But the problem is that that's a national credential and the scope of practice is different everywhere. And so really like our intention is to fill the gap between, you know, you don't learn how to do IVs necessarily and you're training if you're not somewhere where that can happen. But then, you know, but, but we don't, I don't feel the need to say everybody has to do eight hours and eight IV starts just to get an organ license when you come from Washington and you're like, I do IVs all the time for GDS, like, you know, so, uh, I would be open to hearing what EMS do, but I think that the problem is that their scope of practice is probably a little more universal, um, state to state. And so I think that midwives are going to face kind of a unique issue.
Yeah.
Um, in, in that context.
Yeah. This is Meredith Mann. I think the other, the other thing, I mean, I agree, I really like the idea of having a skills sign-off and then you know, you get the education that you need if you're not ready for that sign-off in certain skills. Um, but I think that's going to help the accessibility issue because right now, that's the even bigger problem to me than the 40 hours. Like, yeah, the 40 hours is a lot and it's a little redundant for experienced midwives coming in, but there's one person in the entire state that teaches it and that's a huge problem to me. Um, and I think we're, we can't find other people that are willing to do it because it's such a big commitment. So if we can do like proctor's sign-off and things like that, I feel like we could have like EMTs that could volunteer that would sign up on IV skills because they have those skills. You don't have to be a midwife, I don't think, to me, to be able to sign up on someone's ability to give IM injections or to start an IV. And I think like if we can actually make options for people around the state to get that sign-off and that education a little easier than coming to Albany for the one human being that offers 40 hours, that would solve a big part of the problem to me.
That's a great idea to have other providers, you know, as a possibility. I mean, I imagine there might be more midwives though that would be willing to be available if it was less of a, of a time commitment, you know, if it was just around getting together for a couple of hours to do the sign-offs of skills. Way more doable for folks.
Yeah, that feels like something that people would be more willing to volunteer for. Like nobody wants to teach a 3-hour class, but people might be willing to do the sign-off on somebody's IV skills a few times.
Right. Okay.
I think that's really great. Oh, go ahead Beth. Well, I, I just, I also wanted to ask you guys for clarification on Silka's, um, comments that the Board should, or that the Rules Advisory Committee or the Education Committee or whatever should, should solely be made up of LDMs or if there could be additional nurse midwives or other people on the Rules Advisory Committee?
Or if there could be additional nurse midwives or other people on the Rules Advisory Committee?
Yeah, this is Meredith, I, um, I think that having primarily LDMs is a good idea and that probably, you know, having some CNMs or one, I keep depending on how many people total, would offer some more perspective or be, or could, you know, about midwifery practice in other locations. I, I agree that, I don't know that medical providers, you know, doctors necessarily are necessary on the, on the committee, as, you know, she's, she's right that we've been determining our own LDM, you know, since the beginning of women's, so. It is, it is true, we don't sit on their rap, we don't decide what doctors considering education is, so, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, this is Wendy, I, I agree, I don't think you need a doctor, in fact, doctors have the least amount of, you know, kind of more practical clinical skills than anyone in the world. I'm just wondering if, if, if a CNN might be, you know, a good thought. I, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I, 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 I don't think it's, I think she said led by, I mean, I don't think that's led by, I think that's contributing some, you know, information as to what someone who has, you know, an RN or medical training might think would be helpful. And, you know, I, I mean, I, I think, honestly, this is something that I've wanted to talk about for a long time, and I'll bring it up just for two seconds because it's probably not appropriate, but I'd also love for this committee to think about whether tranexamic acid should be brought into the mix here. I, I know it's off topic, you know, stop talking about it, but I feel like this could be, right, I mean, I feel like this could be a time where more thought is going into other alternatives as well, and for that, you, you may need other providers. And, and this may not be the time, but if we're taking the time to form this committee, maybe we do need to think about making it a little bit more expansive.
So this is Lynette, and I feel, I need to talk to this from multiple perspectives. I, I do also agree that another provider type would be really helpful on this committee, both for perspective and for what Wendy is bringing up about potentially adding new licensed drugs at some point. I think that it would be great to have the training be such that we could add new, new things and not have to rewrite the training. But also, Wendy, this speaks to your specific question about tranexamic acid, it is something I brought up with OMC and I would like to see it added. I've also talked about trying to get tributaline added to our scope. But that's something that we can certainly talk about more, but I, I think more specific to this conversation, I think that we need to consider writing the LDM continuing education requirements such that they can be applied to any LDM drugs or procedures that may or may not be added to our scope in the future.
That's a really great point, thank you, Lynette. And I do think that that's the direction that we could give this committee is to, like, take a look at our scope of practice and medications and devices that we're using currently, and if there are, you know, evidence-based recommendations that we have. Like, I am fully support of adding tranexamic acid to our scope, and I think as an intrahemorrhagic, that would be an easy add that the board could do in and of itself. I think we looked at tributaline before and because it was a different class of medication that isn't outlined in our statute, we would have, we would have to change the law, not just our rule to add it, so that's sort of a different, whole other process that we don't have, you know, control over directly ourselves. I, I do, I think that one of the points that Filip made with other provider types on the board and to kind of echo Wendy's comment of, you know, if we want those committees to look at tranexamic acid, it would absolutely make sense to have input from someone, but would that person with that experience need to be at every committee meeting? I, I think that that answer might be no, and I think that we could give, you know, the committee some autonomy to speak out the experts that they need for, like, those specific parts of the process. So I don't know that we, we need to require somebody who has, you know, experience with TXA to be on, on that committee every meeting, when they might only talk about TXA, you know, once. And I also just want to echo that I really do like what Lynette was just saying about instead of having it really prescribed out for every single drug and device, just have something more general of, you know, these are the uses and these are the contraindications and these are the side effects and the rules of administration, and you could have that list of all of the topics for every drug or device, and then it would be simple, you know, we don't have to have a super prescriptive curriculum, and it would be easier for the instructors to update it than the evidence changes on those things.
Yeah, I agree also, great idea. So today, aren't we sort of charged with deciding the categories of people that we want to be on the committee? And then, of course, we have to, you know, so people have to apply and want to be on it. So is that our main, our main goal for today with this topic, is that right, Amy?
That is correct, yes. So you have tons of options, so you, obviously, people have to apply and want to be on it, so that's where Srinthya and Sammy will take on applications. But if you want to say, and you have options where you could say a certified nurse midwife who works in a standalone birthing center? So, I mean, you can be that prescriptive, but then not pick the actual individual, that actual individual has to actually apply and commit and, and be. So for instance, if you guys come up with a committee that makes up of six positions, you have to have quorum, just like you have a board. So those people have to commit and they have to, you know, be willing to participate and be there on a regular basis because if they, if you don't have quorum, they can't eat. So it's that same kind of concept as with you guys, so. But you should be as, as descriptive as you want in the, the other thing too, that you may, could think about is having maybe somebody who has not been disciplined, you know, because if you have an individual who's on a committee who has had their license revoked or suspended for practice issues, that might, you know, you might not want them necessarily on a rack, but just food for thought, but that's what you guys are here to do today, yes.
This is Wendy, do we have to define the number of meetings or is that fluid?
Not the number of meetings, the number of people.
Okay.
So, yeah, we want six people, four of them LDMs, two of them, I don't know, I'm just throwing stuff out there. You guys need to pick that.
I understand, but are we, but they are, I mean, like, in the past when we had that rap for the, you know, for the delivery types, it was one event, you know, and that, and that was what it was. I mean, this one is not that defined.
Correct. It'll kind of depend on where they, you know, how long and how fast and, you know.
Yeah.
Usually the first meeting is everybody gets to know each other, kind of figure out what the game plan is, what you guys want, and kind of get that going. And then usually the next meeting, they'll actually start getting down into the weeds of stuff, and then there'll be times where they have to do research and then come back and get, you know, so. They'll meet as many times as they need to in order to get a good product to be able to give to the board.
Great, and this can be virtual?
Yes, it will be virtual, yes.
Lynette, your hand's been up, do you still have something to add?
No, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, just sort of check.
Right now, we have three meetings tentatively scheduled, spaced out.
To start, to start when?
Correct.
When?
To start when?
Yes, Wendy.
Wendy was asking for a date.
Oh, what, what date, so they, Sammy, what are some of the dates?
June 10th is the first committee date. July 15th and August 26th. And then at the September meeting, hopefully we'll have a really good idea of what, hopefully will be done, have a good game plan, and then we'll go into rulemaking after that. All of what you guys decide wrapped up in the rules.
So this is Kelsey, and I do think that six people sounds like a good amount for the committee, and I do think that for the people on the committee, community birth providers would be great, so either a licensed midwife or, like, maybe one CNN who is doing out-of-hospital birth if we decide to have someone who's not an LDM. I do think it makes sense to have, you know, actually practicing midwives and people who are doing some kind of, or who have experience with midwifery education, so whether they've taught school or they're doing, or they're teaching continuing ed, I think that those things all make sense.
This is Meredith, I'd agree with that, like, having some sort of out-of-hospital or community experience. One thing that Wendy said kind of keeps coming back to mind for me, if we do have providers on here that are LDMs or CNMs even, but having RNs that are frequently starting IVs and doing, especially in a community setting, like, people that maybe work outside of the hospital in home health, or, but, I mean, those are providers that are doing this sort of administration constantly, at least for things like IVs, maybe not like the pharmacologies since they're not ever ordering it, but just a thought.
This is Wendy, I mean, I, I think that's actually a really good thought. They're often the people that know the, you know, the protocol guidelines the best for, for certain sorts of things. And, and this is Wendy, I mean, I, I would, I would, I don't, I, I, obviously, we can't be too prescriptive, but, you know, there is the, there is the CNN-run birth center that Woodman's Healthcare Associates have in, in this area that I think, you know, I, I know you can't be that prescriptive, but I would, I would like to go to that birth center and see if anyone there would be interested. And, and, I don't, that would be somebody who has, you know, a little more, who has community birth experience and a little more, you know, active use training.
This is Kelsey, and I think that, I actually feel a little bit the opposite about an RN who does IVs all the time. I think the problem that we have more option with LDM, that we aren't doing IVs all the time, for somebody who has experience from, like, having to teach this skill and upkeep this skill when you aren't constantly doing them, it's going to be potentially more stressful. And I do, I don't know if, like, if you go back to Wendy earlier, I do that, asking about, like, EMS, but, like, maybe for the paramedics might be, if someone, because they're not necessarily, they're not doing all of that skill all the time, and I think they have pretty rare continuing ed requirements. I sat next to somebody on the paramedic board in one of my DPR classes, and it was interesting just kind of listening to her talk about all the requirements.
We, we do, I mean, the one thing I would say about our, our ends is we are, you know, we're a teaching facility and, you know, our, our RNs are always teaching people with, with limited experience and, I don't know, I, I like your paramedic idea, I do, I just think paramedics are afraid of pregnant people.
I mean, maybe, maybe them being on the committee would be outreach, but.
I, I don't think that's a bad idea. But I, I kind of like the idea of an RN who is from a more academic place that has, you know, training as a part of their, they're very skilled and they really, I mean, the one thing I can say is they know what the indications for meds are, even though they're not ordering it, they have that guideline drilled into them and will clearly let us know when we are off-base, so.
Yeah, I, I agree that this is Kelsey, somebody that has experience doing clinical education for these skills that we're looking at, like, we could have, you know, I would love to see a midwifery educator specifically, but also I think someone who's doing, like, an RN educator could be a great person to have, because I think, I'm thinking about a friend who went through nursing school recently and had to learn all of these same kind of skills that we do. And it sounds like they probably have a lot of input on, like, how to teach and verify these skills.
This is Lynette, and I have a question. What happens if we decide on who we want on this committee and we can't find that person or that person doesn't apply? Do we have to start again? Like, how does that work?
You're getting close, so as soon as you say, okay, there's six, one of them has to be, and this is where you don't want to get too prescriptive, it has to be a nurse midwife who is an educator, who has 10 years of experience, and then pretty soon, nobody ever applies for that? So now you only have five people and you're not getting that person, and now you have five people and you still have those quorum issues. So your committee is made up of six and you have a vacant position, just like you're a board and you have a vacant position, so, yes. So I get where you're coming from, so, but you don't want to get too prescriptive because then if nobody applies, you know, and we've had that before where we've actually got to where nobody's applied for, for a committee, so then we had to go back to the board and say, okay, here's, nobody applied, make it broader, or whatever, so. We can always bring it back to you if nobody, if we don't ever get anybody.
And can we say something like, four LDMs, two midwifery educators, and one other person that could be, be several provider types?
Yes. Do whatever you want, you just have to give us direction.
Yep.
Great.
How long are the meetings?
They're, they're usually several hours. Sammy, how long do you, are the meetings scheduled for?
Probably 10 to 10 to 2, 10 to 3. It could vary based on the people that we get, they'll want you to eat a puppy, you could do that, I would say four hours.
And if they can't, I mean, can, can they come together as a, as a group and say, sorry, June 10th is not going to work for us?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, when we put out the letter, we say these are the dates, but we obviously can't get people for those dates. And Srinthya may word it differently, I don't know, but we'll work, we'll get, we'll do all that, make sure everybody can meet at the same time.
So did we want to say that four out of six, we want to be LDM? And how many, I mean, I think at least a couple should be that, you know, experience with education, direct midwifery education, or like, so, so was suggesting Jessica Dolan who organized those highest classes, people that are actively involved, I mean, at least two? What do, what do other people think about, about that?
I think, I think it would be great to have one person who is, or two people that do midwifery education, one could be like a general educator, and one that specifically has experience teaching LDM how it is now, because I think they could really clarify some of the strengths and weaknesses of the way it's currently set up.
Right. Yeah, I know, hopefully Julia will want to be on it.
Right.
Maybe she's about to have a baby.
I think if we did, if we have a six-person committee, if we have five midwives and two of them have those requirements, and then our sixth person could be some, somebody who has education. And then our sixth person could be some, somebody who has education experience in educating clinical skills. And whether that is an RN educator or a paramedic or, I think that I'm open to that. That thought being more open as long as it's somebody who has experience teaching the clinical skills that we're looking for. Which is, you know, resuscitation, IVs, administering that. I don't think that they have to be like OB specific at all to teach us how to do an injection, you know?
Right.
Um, this is Wendy. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make my wish list of four LDMs, a CNM with birth center experience. And then the other clinical role of a staff RN with teaching experience. And I would, I would love it to be an obstetrical nurse. And I will certainly throw this out to the providers in our institution and, and, or, or a paramedic. I mean, I like that idea, but I honestly like an RN idea with OB experience that are. But I, I feel strongly that there is something to gain from a clinically practicing midwife with community birth experience.
What about, uh, someone like Laura Barco?
I mean, we're not supposed to.
Oh, we're not?
We have to decide the type, not necessarily the individuals. Because that's just, people have to apply. We don't get to dictate who is on it or not. But I, yeah, Laura Barco would absolutely fulfill a CNM who works in community birth.
But in a birth, she does like full birth. No.
Yeah. I think we could say, so if we do want to do that, four LDMs, two with the education experience, one specifically to LDND, one CNM with community birth experience. And then, I don't know, Wendy, I want to push back a little bit that they should be like a staff RN. Because I think if we got someone who's doing nursing education at, like at schools, like at Lynnfield, like that, that person I think would have, you know, as much value as somebody who's on staff.
I totally disagree with that. I'm sorry. I see the educators that come to our unit and they look like deer in the headlights. They look like they're trying to stay very calm and cool, but those, they are, they are enough removed from the acuity of what's happening that I, I don't agree that they have the, you know, clinical insight in this type of stuff. And I, I understand what you're saying and in theory it sounds great, but it's why I would never go to the chief of a department or someone who is 75% admin. Because they're just, they just are enough removed that the, that they, they come at it, they come at it from a very, very different viewpoint. And that's not what you're looking for here.
I think that we're not looking for someone who's going to be doing the teaching though and someone who's really up to date on like what the evidence says about, you know, this is how you teach this skill and this is how many it takes to get this level of competence. I feel like an educator is going to have more of that information. This is not a hill I'm going to die on, but.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I don't know what to say, but I, I, I disagree. I feel like unless they're an educator that just, that does, does active research or whatever, this is the kind of, I feel like this is the kind of person that you want in a pinch to be, to tell you the things that when you hit a valve and you can't advance the catheter.
But Wendy, that's, but that's not, but that's, that's, that's to be the people who are teaching the classes that need to know how to do that. I, I don't think the people outlining how we verify skills need to have that specific of education. Like we're looking at how do you teach these things? How do you verify that somebody knows these things? We aren't actually like outlining the procedure for how to give an IV. Like that's what we're moving away from.
I get it. I hear you. I, I hear you. I think, I think an active clinical person who has a role in clinical teaching would be great. I, again, I agree. Not a hill I'm going to die on. I think that's fine. I just, it's my perspective on, on educators.
Well, why don't we, um, meet it open and see who we get to apply? Because we might not have, you know, an outpouring of.
I agree. Like.
Yeah. Like it could be a nurse with either of those backgrounds.
Right. And I think that's why I said before, like I don't even know that we need a supplement to a nurse, but just somebody who does education of these direct clinical skills. Whether that's a nurse or, you know, whoever. A PA. I mean, I think there's a lot of people who do these skills that could apply and be as helpful as others.
And that brings up another question for me. This is what I, if we get multiple applications, who decides who gets to be the one selected?
Interesting point. Didn't think of that.
Usually I get, but.
Oh, yeah. Um, I think what we could do, if we get a whole bunch of people who apply and then it's like, oh God, someone's got to make a decision. You guys will get to make a decision. So we'll, we'll do a little meeting. Make sure that you have all the information that you need and then you get to pick, you know. So, and that's how we can do it if you want.
Is there certain information you would need because the interest form is pretty thick?
Okay. Wendy?
I was just thinking for that last provider types that were a little more open on and like, if we had to choose someone that was a nurse educator or someone who was a, you know, something else, kind of like Wendy and, and Kelsey were bantering back and forth about. Then we could either provide Sammy with direction about which would be our preference or we could come back together and decide together.
Absolutely. Okay. Cause if they don't meet until June, we're only in April. So we could, you know, we've got time if we gotta, you know, if we get a bunch of people who apply for either of the positions, you know, then we can, we can do another meeting where you guys have to decide on whom to appoint.
You guys meet May 13th, the next meeting. Or we could do something in the middle.
So do you have enough information from us, Sammy, to move forward with putting, putting our.
Yes.
Applying to having to be in the birth?
Yep.
Great.
So you guys actually have to vote on it. So just because you've all talked about it does not necessarily mean that you all agreed on it. So you, somebody actually has to make a motion and somebody has to second it. So you, um, and I, I am not 100% clear. I think I heard six, but you went from four to five to four on LDMs. So I'm not sure where that ended up at. And then you talked about two educators and at least one of those educators is a person who currently teaches LDND. And then you talked about a CNM that works out, is out of the hospital center, either a birthing center or at home, but out of the hospital. And then an individual.
Claire's not.
What?
Claire's not.
I know, right? And then there was an individual who specifically teaches the clinical skills, whether they're licensed as an RN in EMT or something else.
Do, do we propose that now or what do you, or do we propose that later?
Well, you have to. You have to, you have to vote on and decide, is it six? Is it seven? Because it doesn't have to be six.
Oh.
Yeah. Does anyone else have more that they want to talk about, about who's on it? If not, I feel I can propose a thing.
Kelsey, would you do me a favor? This is Beth and just summarize what the proposal's going to be so I can kind of hear it. I think I know, but.
Yeah. So, um, it's down to me. Like we have decided on a committee of six members. One of whom is a clinical skills educator, whether that's a paramedic or an EMT or a nurse, et cetera. There would be five midwives, one of whom is a CNM who does community birth. The remaining four would be LDM. And I think we could say either active or retired in good standing. And two of them would have experience in midwifery education. One could be this general and one specifically has direct experience with LDND.
And do we want to add the piece about how they have no board action previous pending?
I mean, I'm sure that LDM, that they're, they either have an active license or are retired in good standing. Does that feel like enough? That would exclude people who'd had their licenses revoked.
I'm comfortable with that, with not having, with not including never had an action. Because I mean, there are some people that I think where that doesn't necessarily affect their LDND. Like it could be something totally unrelated that could be excluding someone that's good. And we have a small pool for pulling from, so I think.
Yeah.
Active license in good standing or retired in good standing.
I think that makes sense. If somebody made like a mistake that required education 15 years ago, that doesn't necessarily mean they aren't a great LDM now.
Wendy, have their hand up. Wendy, do you have something to say or did you just forget?
I can clap.
It's okay.
I think that sounds good, Kelsey. Let's do it.
Um, what, I have a question. What if quorum for, is it the same as we have a majority?
Correct. So if you're going to do six, then four people have to meet at the meeting or they cannot have the meeting.
Oh, so if there's six, they still have to have four. So it's like more than half.
Correct. And then one has to be at the meeting and participating. And when I say at, it's like what we're doing now. You're not physically at our office. You're doing, yes.
Well, so the quorum would be the same if we had seven people as if we had six?
Correct. And it might be better to have seven if, especially if people can't agree on stuff. I mean, it's not, they're not really voting. So I mean, Sammy could also just bring to you and say they couldn't agree. Here's two scenarios. You guys pick one.
How do we, if, if seven then is maybe a better idea than six, can we add one more midwife? How does everybody feel about that? One more LDM?
That sounds great. I feel fine with that too. I mean, I guess I'd, I'd love the caveat that if we didn't get that many applications, then we could do it with six.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think seven would be fine, but it's, we're having a hard time getting people to.
It sounded like that was how it was going to work anyways. But if we had six and we only have, you know, five apply that they could still do it, they would just have to have four in there to have four. So I think that that, you know, six or seven is already kind of built in. We're just giving ourselves a better shot with seven.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I can do that. Everybody's ready?
Yep.
Okay. This is Kelsey Fisher and I move that we create an education committee to assess Ledging Draxon Devices Education for LDM. And that that committee consists of seven physicians, five of whom are licensed direct entry midwives, two of whom have education experience, one can be general education experience and another that has experience directly teaching Ledging Draxon Devices. The other two physicians, one can be a CNM who has community birth experience, so either a birth center or home birth. And someone who has experience providing clinical skills education, whether that's a RN or a paramedic. We are open about that.
This is Beth. I second that motion.
Beth, Beth, you can't because you're, you're doing the whole scripting thing.
This is Mary. I second the motion.
Captain, now Beth, you have a first and second. You can now call roll.
Okay. So now I will call roll. Meredith Klein?
Aye.
Beth, aye, but aye. Wendy Smith?
I just need to clarify that because Kelsey, I felt like there were too many cans in there. I, I want to say five LDMs with the skills that you mentioned. One CNM with community birth experience. And one clinical provider including, but not necessarily limited to, staff RN with obstetrical experience or active paramedic with clinical training skills or something. I mean, I just felt like there were too many cans in there. But I think that last one, I'm willing, the last one I'm willing to be a little more flexible on. The second to last one, the CNM with community birth experience, I'm, I'm not willing to be flexible on. So is that, is that what you said? Because I just felt like there were too many cans.
Yeah, and maybe I'm direct enough in my language. One of the physicians, one of the seats is for a CNM with community birth experience. One of the seats is for someone with direct clinical education experience. Including but not limited to an OB RN or paramedic, et cetera.
Okay. And yes. So this is Heather. And we're just going to clarify for the record that the motion that was on the table is the motion that Kelsey made with the clarification that Wendy made. So everyone's on the same page as to what the motion is. Going back, does anyone who's already voted have changed their vote with the clarification?
No.
Okay. Then you can move forward. Just want to make sure we all knew what the motion was. Thank you.
Okay. So has Wendy Smith voted?
I have. I said yes.
Okay. Christine Morales? Uh, Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pepebone?
Aye.
And Meredith Mann?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. So now you guys are on the agenda on item number five. Beth, you should have yet another script that you need to read.
The Board of Direct Entry Midwifery will now leave the public meeting pursuant to ORS 192, six, step one, to deliberate on contested cases at 9:15 a.m. on April 15, 2021. The deliberation will not be recorded and no final decisions will be made.
Okay. Yeah. The Board of Direct Entry Midwifery will now reconvene open session at 10:28 a.m. No final decisions were made and no votes were taken. The public phone line has been unmuted and representatives of the media may once again report all board discussions and actions.
So recording going, Bob?
Yes, ma'am.
Recording's going. Okay. So we are back on the agenda on item number six.
This is Kelsey Fisher, and I propose that in case number 14-7699, that the board accepts the terms of the proposed settlement.
This is what I, and I second the motion.
I will now call roll Meredith Klein.
Aye.
Beth Iva, aye. Wendy Smith?
Aye.
Christine Morales?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone?
Aye.
Meredith Man?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher and I propose that in case number 17-8737, that the board offers a counteroffer to the licensee, including her settlement proposal and additional requirements, and that we delegate to the chair the authority to approve final terms.
This is what I, and I second that motion.
And I will now call roll Meredith Klein.
Aye.
Beth Iva, aye. Wendy Smith?
No, I would propose that we continue on towards, towards the hearing and revocation.
Christine Morales?
Aye.
Kelsey Fisher?
Aye.
Lynette Pettibone?
Aye.
And Meredith Man?
Aye.
Okay, you guys, we are on item number seven, other board business. Anything more besides the fact that I do believe you, what do we decide? Just not wrong, all right? What your next board meeting is? I don't know.
May 13th.
May 13th.
May 13th.
If there's no other board business that anybody wants to talk about, then Beth, you have a, another script to read, but there's only one line.
Yes, the Board of Direct Entry Midwifery meeting is adjourned at 10:32 a.m.